Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. Up next, Ms. Tracy Busby from the Management Experts, here to give us a legislative appropriations presentation.
Yep, there she is.
I'm sorry, I thought I was too behind, so I apologize.
Oh, you're good, we just moved you up in the line, Ms. Tracy.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, um, last week, we actually met as a small group and talked about the legislative requests because they are due, um, the House is due on November the 8th, and the Senate's due November 14th. And we talked about a few different things, a couple of the projects that we talked about were the EMS substation in Lanark, um, the Alligator Point Boat Ramp, and the St. George Island Path Phase Two. And so, before we go into a little bit, and then today, I've actually added the bear situation, so I've got that on my list. But I did talk to Senator Simon's office on Friday, and I don't think we're gonna have to do the Alligator Point Boat Ramp because it's also an issue of theirs, and when I talked to Stephen, he said that he doesn't think it'll have to be a legislative request on our part, but that they'll actually be the champion, I guess you would say, of it. I did tell him that we would send as much documentation as we talked about with the, like, letters that have been sent to Michael, or to you, Mr. Chairman, so that we can kinda give him a full package. So I did want to talk about that, and then kinda put it back in y'all's, um, court of if these are the actual projects you want to go for, or if there's additional ones that we would like to add.
Is there anything additional, Commissioners, that y'all have? I don't, I don't think we really talked about anything else, but now's the time to discuss it, I guess, like a final, or maybe not final, but we need to wrap it up and kind of know for sure what we're, what our focus is this upcoming legislative session. Is there anything additional?
I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay. Uh, the only thing I will ask, Ms. Tracy, I, I, I don't know how we'd go about getting the number for the stuff to do with the bear-resistant trash cans.
Right.
And I will say this, uh, I know it might require us moving forward with mandatory trash pickup, 'cause the last thing that, that I want to continue to have perpetuated, that has been perpetuated in recent weeks, is that somehow there's just a bunch of trash all over Franklin County, 'cause we don't have trash pickup. We do, we just don't have mandatory trash pickup.
Right, right.
Uh, you know, the, with a local provider that's here in the county, has a contract with both cities, he does 90% of St. George Island, 90% of East Point, he has a contract with those individual homeowners. So it's not like there's not trash being picked up, but-
Right.
But if it can help us to be able to secure those cans, or know how many cans are needed, and what kind of funding, that's my only question, 'cause I know these cans are not cheap.
Right.
I want to say they're over $300 apiece.
Right.
You know what I mean, so.
And so, would you, would you guys be asking for the funds to purchase the cans for the residents, is that what you're thinking?
So, yes, ma'am, it'd have to be one or two ways, and we'd have to work that out. But I think going on some of the models, and again, this is information we got last night, none of us have really read through it from Seminole County.
Right.
What they did, they were able to get, wherever they got the money from, they were able to get some money, they used that money to buy bear-resistant trash cans. What they did, though, was they then sold those bear-resistant cans to the municipalities, which they have more municipalities than we do.
Right.
At the same rate that they would have paid for a regular can, 'cause there's a big difference.
Ah, okay.
It's about $250 difference, but anyway.
Right.
And I don't know if they worked out something with their residents where they were, I don't know, $40 or whatever for the can, but all the money they took in selling them, they put back in a fund to either be a, a match for a grant going forward, or to help have some funds to replace cans that maybe get damaged by interactions with bears, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, yes.
It wasn't a one-and-done type deal, is what I'm saying.
Okay, is there anything, could you shoot me whatever you were reading from Seminole County, so I can kinda, like, I did print out, um-
I just forwarded that email.
-from y'all's site, the, the FWC doc, but I mean, if that's particularly contain, like, to the cans, I'd like that language.
Well, I haven't read through it, but I think Michael Merone said he just forwarded you that email.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Now, I did make a note, who, uh, somebody asked for legislative, and then it went through the House and Senate, but it not get funded, was that Seminole, too?
That's what one of the, the representatives from FWC said today, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, you know what I mean? But again, all that information we got from Seminole County, I received it late last night, and I forwarded it.
Right.
You know what I mean, I don't think none of us have read it through yet.
Okay, okay. Um, so that is a project, though, that we want to add, correct?
Well, I think so, I, I-
Okay.
I, I know I've said a lot, but I, our bigger thing is we need to nail down, do we need $120,000, $200,000, you know what I mean?
Right.
What, what is the need, as far as what would cover, you know, doesn't matter what residents currently have.
So, with-
What would cover everything?
Does, is it Waste Pro that has y'all's service, or do you guys use somebody else?
Waste One.
Waste One.
Yeah.
Waste One, okay. Um, and is it, do homeowners have to, like, is that on there, like, I know here in the city of Tallahassee, like, it's in our electric bill, our trash is, so it's just charge on that, and you're right, like, the cans are like $50 apiece, and so, do residents have to buy in, or is it everybody, it just becomes part of their bill, and it, and that's, like, everybody gets trash pickup?
I think that would be answered whenever, if and when we move forward with mandatory trash pickup, 'cause if we make a, an agreement with someone, and they're the ones gonna be doing it, then it becomes a lot cleaner as far as who's receiving the cans, and at what amount, and all that kind of stuff.
I think she might be asking you currently, how is it done also, Commissioner? So the two cities, it's mandatory, and unincorporated, it's elective, so.
Yeah, it's elective.
I got you, okay.
So there's not really, as far as, it's elective, as far as we don't tell them they have to choose a provider, or that kind of deal, it's not mandatory.
Right, 'cause I could see, like, just listening to the gentleman from FWC this morning, I mean, I could see that, like, if everybody doesn't do it, you're still gonna have an issue, you know what I mean, like, it's almost like an all kind of thing, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's what they were presenting, but here's the thing that, that we didn't address to them this morning, and I definitely thought it more than once, let's fast forward in time, two years, we have mandatory trash pickup, we've had it for over a year, and we still have a bear problem, what's their solution then?
Exactly.
Right, exactly.
Because 90% of our county, they own, they have plenty of habitat for the bears, you know what I mean, so.
Right.
It sounds like what they're doing is, and I don't want to mischaracterize their statements, they are basically putting the ball in our court and saying, we want you to do something with your trash.
Right.
You know, we're not gonna do much more than what we're doing until you take care of your trash issue, is what it sounds like.
Well, I mean, and, and I know it has, it's not Florida, but my sister lives in Colorado, kind of outside in the mountain area, and they have everything you're talking about, they've got the trash cans, they got everything, and those bears are all over the place, and they're still destructive, so the trash doesn't solve the problem.
Right, right.
Okay. All right, and then, um, so we've got that one, and then with the construction of the EMS station in Lanark, and then the SGI path, like, Phase Two, those were the other two projects, and then, of course, the boat ramp, but I think that's gonna be taken off of y'all's burden.
Okay, good, even better.
And Mr. Tammy, you still-
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buggie, this is Commissioner Ward, you still have the, trying to, trying to get some land from the state to allow us for maybe a shooting range of some kind? Is that what we talked about?
We did mention legislative delegation, I don't know that it was on, was that on what she was presenting, Michael?
Oh, that, that was Commissioner, um, Jones, you, that one page that you sent me, it's under state land, but we did not talk about that.
Did you want to add that, Commissioner?
I mean, I don't think it's gonna matter, but it doesn't hurt to ask, in my opinion.
So can you give me a little, I don't know much about what you want on the shooting range?
Um, I can get with you after the meet, Ms. Tracy.
Okay.
But we've talked about it at length, basically in a nutshell, and just, just for the record, we, our current shooting range is behind the Humane Society, and it's causing some safety concerns, and, you know, we have some county-owned property just not far from there, but we, in the, it was talked about in the past, that FWC was gonna help us get a shooting range, however, they were wanting a lot of, um, it was a lot of details, so, you know, we, again, as the chairman stated, they own most of our property, so can they, and Wilton Simpson, the current Commissioner of Agriculture, stated that he wants to start giving some of this state land back to these rural, fiscally constrained counties, so I'd like to see if they would maybe give us some percentage of land back to us, so that we can help facilitate things for our community.
So then, your request would just be that FWC give land, you're not asking for any funds to build the shooting range?
I mean, if, if that, if we can incorporate that, but it's, I don't think it's FWC land, it's, what, state land, so I guess, it's owned by the state of Florida, National Forestry Service, I guess, is, is who it's owned by.
Okay.
State Forest.
State, State Forest.
So it'd be Department of Ag, then?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause that might be another one that we talked to the center representative about, 'cause my whole, the whole reasoning for me calling Simon's office the other day is we had this discussion, and it's like, how much money are you asking for, for this boat ramp in Alligator Point? So that kind of what started my conversation, uh, because it's, we're asking for state land, so that might be one, I'm not sure if that's a true legislative request, or is that trying to work through, like, the Department of Ag, or through, you know, the legislative, like, work behind the scenes, not through an appropriation? 'Cause there's not really any money.
No, there isn't, but I, I think, Ms. Tracy, we're not 100% of this, I guarantee you, but I think that the proper step would be to work through the Department of Agriculture first, to make sure they're behind it, but for them to be able to give us any land, it's probably had to go through our legislative delegation to help propose it, and get others to vote on it, you know what I mean, I don't-
'Cause that would kind of be different, 'cause you're actually wanting them, 'cause, like, when we were, sorry, when we were talking about the boat ramp, they weren't really, they, you just want a boat ramp.
Yep.
It's not being given to you, so, yeah, this might be a little different, okay.
And if you want to put a price on it, you know, FWC gave us the quote of $400,000, but we, the county was gonna have to come up with, I think, $100,000, so if you want a number put on it, I mean, any little bit, it doesn't hurt to ask, in my opinion, they can always say no, but my, my-
They can always say yes.
They can always say yes, right, so it never hurts to ask.
So then, where would that fall in y'all's request? We have to, like, kind of rank them, too?
Well, that's, let's make that the last on the list, because all this other stuff has been talked about, we, we've been trying to get it, so that takes precedence over, for that request.
Okay.
If we're gonna try to rank them, I'm just, I think EMS substation has to be number one.
Number one, for sure.
Has to do with health and welfare, I mean, some of those stuff would be good, it'd be nice to be able to do some of those other things, but that should be number one.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? And again, I think all of y'all have my phone number, so please call me, um, 'cause obviously I want to incorporate any of your thoughts and ideas, too. And let's see, so if we're at, today is the 17th, I would like to have these done by, like, you know, what your, your next means the 7th, so we definitely have to have them done before then, um, Michael, how does that work, did, for review purposes?
Outside of a special meeting, I would say you can submit them to me.
Okay.
I sent them to the Commissioners, they give me a nod, yes or no, and I give that back to you, and then we could basically, at the 7th, say, here are the applications that we submitted, and we go from there.
Right, 'cause then, you know, the 8th is the next day, um, we, but you guys, I mean, we probably could actually wait till the 7th, in case there's any major changes, but so, I will shoot for getting them done no later than, like, the 3rd or the 4th.
Okay.
And then getting them to you, and then they'll have at least, like, over the weekend, to be able to look at them, and, and again, if there's any comments back and forth, um, you know, call me, and we can kind of talk through, and I can make the changes before the 7th.
That works.
Yeah, that would be good, before the meeting on the 7th, yes.
Yes, yes, sir, just so that you're not looking at them for the first time at the meeting, and then we're trying to make changes if there is some.
Right, so if there's any major, something were to come up, yeah, we could discuss that, and kind of have it queued up before then, so you're not trying to change it after the fact.
Right, and I know, I don't know if Erin, is Erin there, 'cause we had talked about if she could send me anything that she has on that SGI path, just so I can get working, and then also on the EMS station, 'cause I think there's plans already done?
She, she's listening, and, yeah, I'll have her send it to you.
Perfect, perfect, thank you. And, other than that, if anybody has any questions of me?
Commissioners, do y'all have any more questions for Ms. Busby?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and just to, I wanted to go off of one thing that you guys were talking about this morning, with the, um, EOC, the other thing that we're doing right now is I'm working with the state, we're doing the environmental review on the property that you're purchasing, so that we can get, like, all the pieces will be moving at the same time.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Ms. Busby.
Michael, do you need me to stay on?
Nope, we're, we're good.
Okay, thank you. Y'all have a good day.
We want you to get to work, Trace, thank you so much.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, bye.
Mr. Merle, before we proceed, can you bring me a charger, please?
I sure can.
Dead and water over here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, up next, we have plantings on it. Ms. Courtney, I'm just looking at this, before we start, on the thing online that said some of these were tabled, which ones are tabled, and which ones are we talking about today?
He's fixed it, those shouldn't be on there anymore.
Okay.
Yes, I removed those yesterday in review.
So what's printed here is what's accurate?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool, I just wanted to ask for one.
Thanks to Commissioner Amos, and I'll go on.
I'll talk to you.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Courtney.
All right, so the first one, um, you know, we tabled this for a couple of meetings, for the lot reconfiguration applications, the first one was for 2140 Highway 98 West, um, a consideration of a request to reconfigure three existing lots, um, for more proportionate split of road and waterfrontage, that will be similar in width, in order to give each lot more buildable state space at property located at 2140 Highway 98 West, Carabelle, um, that was submitted, submitted by Martin Wall, the applicant.
Okay, any questions, Commissioners, or what's the pleasure of the board?
This is, this is the three lots that they want to break, or convince and make two, correct?
No, this, this one is the one that's three, it's 16 lots, it's still gonna be three lots, they're just gonna be more proportionate lots.
Oh, okay.
So they're still gonna be, remain three lots.
This is a 2140?
Yes.
I had that backwards or something.
Is the applicant here?
I think so.
Uh, hold on. What's going on here?
What's the applicant?
Wall, Martin Wall. And he might have been on there earlier. Not knowing when, when, uh, my report was coming up.
All right, for discussion on this, these three lots, right now, they're grandfathered in, am I understanding that correctly? So in other words, right now, someone could, the, the property owner could potentially build on three different, that's one reason I wanted property owner to be here, to ask some questions, the only, and I've had a chance to go back and review the record since this came back up, and the only instance, and I know Mr. Carrington submitted some kind of a report.
Yes.
And he cited in that report one other instance where the board did this, I don't remember that, frankly, the one that I do remember, and the one instance that I found in the record, was, um, over what we call the Great Wall, Ms. Cheryl, over there, near Yellow Hill, we had, um, an applicant that wanted to do the same type of reconfiguration, um, I, I don't really think that the board has the authority to change lot lines in a deed of record, subdivisions y'all approve, and you can amend and modify subdivision lines all day long, but what happened at the, uh, the Great Wall property, as I remember reading in the record recently, is the applicant had five or six lots of record, some of which were currently buildable, and some of which were not, and so what they did is they went through the subdivision process, and they got as many lots in the subdivision as they had currently buildable spaces, and then the rest of the deeds of record that were not currently buildable spaces, I guess because of past erosion, became common space, and that's, uh, one of the questions I had when this first came up, is are these lots of record or subdivision lots, and these are just deeds of record that somebody, you know, historically put together a, a legal description, and you had a grantor and a grantee, and then the grantee is whoever owns it now, um, but I, I just, I don't think the board can just change the boundary lines on a deed of record as opposed to a subdivision lot, there's a specific statute in Chapter 177 that lays out the process, here's how you create the subdivision, it also lays out the process how you can modify the subdivision, y'all have done that bunches of times, um, in terms of modifying, particularly over on St. George Island and the plantation, where folks don't want, they've got two lots, and they don't want to pay double assessments, so they come to the board, and they ask you to essentially, you know, make that one big lot as opposed to two separate lots, uh, and of course, we routinely go through the process of creating subdivisions day in and day out on a routine basis, but I just, I've looked, I can't find any authority where the board can, um, just reconfigure lot lines on deeds of record, but they do have a remedy, I mean, they go through the, the subdivision process, and they, if they've got three buildable lots now, then they get, you know, a three-lot subdivision.
Yeah.
And they can adjust the boundary lines within that subdivision however they wish to.
Well, that was consistent with my question to begin with, when we first started discussing this publicly a couple months ago.
Yes.
And it's not trying to be at odds with our PZ and A board, I think they do a fine job, but that was my whole point, and maybe I didn't ask it right, but that's what I was thinking about, it's one thing to be dealing with a subdivision, it's another thing to be dealing with a lot of record, and the way it's written up, and I think- And the way it's written up, and I think it has to be a lot of record before a certain time, or an acre. That's the way it's currently written, it might not always stay that way, but that's the way it's written right now.
Correct.
Uh, so, and that was my whole question was, can we change the line on a lot of record i- if it's not gonna be made to an acre? So that was my whole question to begin with. And I didn't state it the right way, but that was, same thing you've just said, that was my whole question to begin with.
And I just had a, basically, an all-day bench trial in front of the circuit judge a couple of months ago. One of the, the issues in litigation was, uh, you know, I needed to ask the judge to reform, um, part of the deed. And there is actually a legal remedy where you can go to a circuit judge, and if you, if you have the correct factual basis, then you can ask the judge, and they will reform, uh, a deed for you. But there are very specific factual bases that you have to establish in order to get reformation. And in this case, uh, you know, the county, as I said, if it's a subdivision, you've got statutory authority, if, but these are not subdivision lots, they're just, um, you know, deeds of record. I don't think the county commission can do anything other than say, go through the subdivision process. That's what we did for the folks over at, uh, the Great Wall of China.
All right, so the written motion to deny then, if that's the factual basis we're going on, cause they're asking for it to do?
Actually, for, but both of them are the same, so I, I think one motion, well, let's be on the safe side, in case they complain. As, as to 2140, my recommendation would be for, to deny the request, because these are deeds of record, not subdivision lots.
Mm-hmm.
And direct them to work with county staff to go through the subdivision process. I mean, they, they have a remedy, there's a process for relief.
Okay.
But they do have to have, the three existing deeds of record would need to be buildable lots, each, each one of them.
Okay. It's a pleasure of the board. We're looking at, uh, item A.
Crickets.
Approved, denied, tabled, all those are acceptable.
Well, the other alternative, since the applicant is not present, I mean, you, you could use that as a basis to table, let them come in and plead their case, I mean.
It's not gonna change the law.
I don't think so.
I, I'm gonna go ahead and deny this based on the attorney's recommendation.
And we have a motion to deny by Commissioner Sanders. Do we have a second?
I'll second the comment, or more of a question. Is that a structure built there?
There's a structure currently on it.
How are they gonna, are they gonna demo it and break it down?
No, this is, this is how they were gonna break it down.
Oh, okay, they were gonna go across?
Mm-hmm.
I s- I still don't like Attorney Schuler said, that's kinda out of our.
Yeah, they, they'll still be able to do it, but they just have to go through the subdivision process to come before you guys, to do it the right way, the legal way.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
I, I've, I've got something I wanna say about it, cause it's the way I feel about it. Cause we've been through, like, Mr. Schuler said the Great Wall and everything, but the one thing that I have been told for going on 22 years now is we cannot change lot lines. We can do everything else just about it, but not change lot line. My thing is, looking at this property, and if you look at it on the water, where you can just see the property itself, not the red stuff. There's a house over here, and the whole thing is right there, the whole lot is right there with the house, and then next to it, there you go. And then next to it over here, then next to it over here is like a 50-foot lot. How, and that's the reason why I, I said no, because to me, we ain't got the right to do that. Like you said, we're gonna, anything like that, you're gonna have to go through a subdivision process, may not get it then, you know?
Cause he has to prove that it was a buildable.
But I, I couldn't, are they gonna tear this house down?
I don't know.
To make, it's just, that's what I was talking about this morning. Some lots in Franklin County are not gonna be buildable.
Yeah.
Cause you look at it, I think if that's not, if, if that's not, um, if I'm not mistaken, it's down there toward, um, where the, um, lighthouses, houses are, right down there, not where the lighthouses, but where the lighthouses are before you get to hunting, right?
Well, Mr. Chairman, my question is, if, if they were grandfathered in, are they buildable as they are now?
That's my question, are they buildable now, all three?
Well, that's what we don't know, I mean, they're grandfathered in, but they, in order to, they're grandfathered in so they don't have to comply with the one acre rule.
Correct.
Uh, however, they still have to comply with all of the other development requirements, and the setbacks, and, and, and. I don't know whether they're buildable or not until some.
Show that picture again.
Some site plan is submitted, or there's a surveyor that, you know, submits a site plan, or the owner submits a site plan.
How far is it from the edge of that property to the roof? They might not be buildable anyway. Don't it have 50 foot from war?
Have to have 50 foot.
Coast to construction line?
Uh, yep.
Still down coast to construction line, man. I mean, that isn't what it is.
Critical shoreline, it's a 50-foot, critical shoreline, the wetlands, that back, yeah.
Yeah.
Get your foot, that's it.
Anyway, any more discussion before we vote? We're voting on item A, all in favor?
Uh.
Uh, all opposed, that's unanimous.
The record shows the attorney's recommendation.
I'd be, did you have something to say about that?
It's, it's the, the same factual, uh, circumstances as I understand it. These are not subdivision lots, these are deeds of record, and I've, I've been unable to find any authority for the board to
Okay.
just, you know, change the lot lines on a deed of record, so.
Well, does, does it matter that this one was already split before though?
I was just looking at where it says to reconfigure it.
Cause that's what I understood about this one.
Mm-hmm.
It was originally split, they brought to the board to put them together and make it one, now they want to split it back apart again.
I said they just lost their grandfathering when they put them together. But, I mean, that's, you mean, the, the board actually did that?
Uh, that's what's being presented. Ms. Courtney, maybe you can fill in some of the details, if you have any, to show.
Um.
Not sure who this is, Courtney, um, with the hammer raised?
Is that Mr.?
Quackenbush is down below.
Yep, 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 that's Mr., that's for his.
Up there?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm muted?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm muted, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, that's fine. That's.
I'm confused, are we still on, uh, item 13A, or are we done with?
13B, yeah, okay. Okay, they're unmuted, it can, go ahead and address.
Okay.
Uh, with the screen name J E T H E, you could, uh, address the commission?
Jackie Etheridge.
Oh, that's Jackie.
Hey, Jackie.
Okay.
Hey, Courtney, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, uh, Mr. Quackenbush is on here as well. Um, I'm sure he would like to speak.
Hold on.
Can, can you hear, can, is he on there?
Yeah, I'm trying to, uh, unmute him now, uh, ask him to unmute right now, Jackie, Mr. Quackenbush, okay, he's unmuted also, Jackie, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, folks. Um, Mr. Quackenbush is one of the owners on the lots. The lots were originally pre-platted in 1948. There was three original lots, I do believe, one of them was a 15-foot lot. Um, Courtney, you can walk us through this, but they were always, it was one parcel, but they were pre-platted. Um, the Quackenbushes and Davises are only asking to do an evil, equal division on these two lots. One of them would be, right now, I, I think they would go to 80-foot wide, but right now, one is 75, one is 55, and I think there's a 15-foot that was absorbed by lot 14, uh, from what Mr. Jeffrey, um, Mr. Farrell had explained to us.
Can you scroll back to that legal description? That doesn't look like a lot and block, a subdivision, that looks like a meets and bounds description.
Which one?
For whichever application we're looking at.
Which page do you need?
Well, let's see, that's. Let's scroll over to the legal description for that deed. Hey, Ms. Jack, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Hey, Ms. Jackie, it's Michael Schuler, uh.
Hi, Michael.
Can you see what we're looking at on the screen? I'm looking at a warranty deed dated March 4th, 2008, from, uh, Berta, the grantor, to Davis and Quackenbush, the grantors, grantees, I mean, is that the, the parcel of land that we're talking about?
Yes, sir, that is the daughters of Ms. Berta, the original, uh, the original owner of Ms. Berta, she left it to her two daughters.
Yes, ma'am, so scroll over to the exhibit A for that deed, down. We'll back up, they stop. Uh, it's somewhat confusing, cause it makes, this clearly a meets and bounds legal description, but it makes reference to a subdivision. So could we table this and let me do some additional? Because if it's a subdivision, they can just go through the subdivision process and amend the subdivision plat. But it's odd for, to see a reference to a subdivision followed by a meets and bounds description. Usually it'll just say Block 1, Lot A of so-and-so subdivision, so.
Courtney, if you can, we, we didn't know what we originally tried, and we were told we had to go this, in this step, because we were just going to do a, a division, but the lots weren't equal division, so that's why we had to bring it to you all, to the commission.
And this is what was recommended to them, yeah.
I don't know, I wasn't involved in that conversation.
This was what was recommended to them by Mark Carrington.
What, to do the subdivision ordinance, Mr. Chairman, sorry?
For, um, basically a lot reconfiguration, basically, cause these were previous lots. Um. I didn't know this was part of, I didn't know this was part of a subdivision either.
But they were put on the one at some point in the past, correct? So it, I guess it was the opinion of Mr. Courtney that since they had already been separated, they were kind of grandfathered into separate lots, even though they currently are one. I mean, it's something to that effect, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Cause he, he wrote in, said something about.
Yeah.
Confused, is, are we talking about one lot here, or three? I thought it was three.
I thought.
Well, there were, there were three.
Nobody knows what one end is doing, or the other five.
I'm sorry? I didn't understand.
Say it again, Jackie.
Office, she doesn't, Paige, that was Paige. Paige doesn't know what she's doing over, and, on that transaction, will you please tell her?
The property has three existing lots of, no, this is for 1808, right?
Uh-huh, yes.
This property has three existing lots of record. There is 194-foot wide lot, 150-foot wide lot, and 115-foot wide lot, all created prior to 1978. This originally, this was originally the property of John and Roberta Berta, and has now passed to their two daughters, and they want to split the parcel into two lots that are the same size. So they're going from three existing lots to two lots.
I'm not trying to delay it, but so, shouldn't that have been done under the same process? Even whether or not the meets and bounds say anything to a subdivision or not?
Yeah.
They can do it in subdivision to move lot lines, but I don't think we can move lot lines. And wouldn't it be the same factual basis?
Correct, that's what I had said earlier, um, what I was confused about is whether or not these are subdivision lots or, or not, because there's a reference to a subdivision, the legal description, but it's also a meets and bounds legal description, which is what you would find in a, a parcel of land that's not located within a subdivision. But you're right, they would still need to go through the subdivision process, either to create a, a subdivision or to modify the lot lines.
So let me ask you this, and I guess we should have asked this before we made our motion a while ago. By us voting no on the other one, does that kick them out of having to wait a year to be able to go back and do their?
No.
No, they can apply immediately.
Okay, should have, I should, we should have asked, I just wanna make sure I knew the answer to the question, you know what I'm saying? Uh, yeah, I mean, even if it doesn't have the language of a subdivision, they still can move lot lines, and that's pretty the only way to get that relief, isn't it?
Through the subdivision process, yes, sir.
When, if you look at what Mark said, one of them says, uh, section 460 of the Franklin County zoning code, use of existing lots of record is what he's going by on the, um, this one for Jackie and Janice.
On his report?
On his report, you see that right there? But then the other one was on, um, it says, did, two different dates, the plans are, okay. Okay, I see where you're staying. Okay, because that other one was hooked up to central sewer, see that? And they were not hooked up to central sewer, that's what it.
One of them has central sewer and water. The main property, 1808, that address, it has sewer and water.
But we were, ma'am, we were trying to talk through, I think, the previous application we were looking at. We're looking at some of the notes that was sent by the county planner in reference to the different projects.
Oh, yes, sir.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna make sure you're clear what we're saying. I think that's what the commissioner was referring to. On the other one, we just considered, it actually did not have water, so it was what.
Okay.
So basically, we don't have the authority to move lot lines?
I don't think we do. I do think we do, isn't that what you had said, Attorney Schuler? It's the same factual basis, we don't have the ability to move lot lines like that, do we?
I look, I mean, we want, the, the board's goal is to help people, so my goal is to give you a factual and legal basis to do that. I can't find a legal basis for y'all just to change, or reconfigure lines on deeds of record that are not part of a subdivision. Those you create subdivisions, you have the ability to modify some.
And in the past.
Or something there that could give you, you know, even a peg to hang your hat on, I can't find it.
Yeah, in the past, have we only just done re- lot configurations on active subdivisions?
Well, not according to Mark's report. Mark's report said there was one instance in, in his report that there was, um, uh, a reconfiguration of lot lines at somewhere, what, near Carabelle or something?
And there's one at Lanart Beach.
I don't know.
So what, what, while we're pondering, so should we not accept any more applications for lot reconfigurations unless they're part of a subdivision? Is that what we're saying?
I mean, I can't.
And Courtney? Cause we, we need to, if that's the case, we set out of the policy, that's how we move forward.
Yeah.
I hate that we're, I mean, we've tabled this twice, uh, you know, and I, I hate that we're here now at, at the third meeting, and just, oh, I didn't do it, yeah. Again, Attorney Schuler says our job is to help them, to help as much as we possibly can, like you said, so.
So for them, because it states that it was part of a subdivision, would they have to get like approval from the other lot owners in that?
That's not the way it's been done.
Okay, okay.
Not at all.
It's not the two or three half.
Yeah, not at all.
Okay.
And actually, I think they haven't laid up on starting that process, cause it's already in their description, as a subdivision, correct?
Yeah, yes. So there, there's to basically be, um.
I mean, this is, I mean, this would be a, um, basically a simple subdivision, probably gonna have to go through sketch plat.
It's more of a, more of a final plat.
Cause I, I, I think Mark and Allen have collapsed sketch and final.
Yeah.
At the same hearing.
Well, yes, well, sketch and preliminary.
I'll let y'all, that's how y'all run your office.
Yeah, um, I, I don't think they could do, I don't, if it's already a subdivision, I don't think they have to go through the sketch plat process again. They would just have to go through a final.
Probably.
Yeah, I think that only, again, this is how y'all, I mean, y'all do all the administrative side, but it seemed like it was very streamlined to me.
Yeah. Okay.
So if we're gonna move forward with that process, we would be, potentially take a, a, a motion to deny this current request and move it to that one, correct?
Yes.
Just like you did the first one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just a quick question, but one of the similar situations was April of last year. Does anybody recall that? I wouldn't hear, I'm just wondering if anybody recalled. What happened? It says here on April 5th, 2022, the county commission approved reconfiguring three lots located at 1788 Highway 98 West. It's on Mark's report.
Yeah.
Is that the one in?
That's one he referred to.
Carabelle?
I don't know, and I don't know if that was part of a subdivision or not either.
I'm just saying, I mean, it, it doesn't state that.
Yeah.
I don't know, well, if anybody had, you know, I know there was two commissioners at that time.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
And attorney's been here.
The whole time, the whole time, yeah, that's all.
Do what now?
Said you've been here the whole time.
Now, Michael Schuler, he probably too, the board.
Probably.
I don't have your memory, Commissioner.
I remember what it was on that great wall.
So, do we have, I would entertain a motion then. I think we've discussed it enough.
I'll motion to table, I mean, to deny.
We have a motion to deny.
Second.
Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders, should be able to handle this through maybe a different process and be able to get the property onto the relief they're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say to wrap this up, I, I wasn't aware that we weren't able to reconfigure lot lines. I see Attorney Schuler's take, but, you know, that, that was something I learned today. So, I was forty-four years old when I learned that today, so, but anyway. So for future reference, though, we may need to look forward to not having these come before us if we can't make a decision on it anyway.
That's right.
But I was surprised to see lot configurations. Actually, I had a lot of questions for Courtney, because I've never seen them before. Here, so.
Any other discussion, Courtney?
I just hate it took us this long to figure out that we.
Well, like I said, and maybe I didn't articulate it right, but that was the, the very question I had the first time we looked at these. The exact same question I had. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Ms. Courtney?
All right. Now we're going on to the regular board report, right? That would be the critical shoreline. Sorry. Don't move out of the way. Okay. There we go. All right, so, the first one I have for critical shoreline is twenty-one fifty-four Highway ninety-eight East. And they are requesting to build a ten eighty-eight square foot single-family dock that consists of, a four-by-one-hundred-and-eighty-four boardwalk, a sixteen-by-ten terminal platform, and a twelve-by-sixteen covered boat slip with a lift located in Lanark Village. This was, the quest was submitted by Florida Environmental Land Services, and they are the agents for Jeff Bender.
I forgot to ask, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Today's been a different kind of day. Did you guys want to look at all these critical shoreline applications as one? Or do there, you want to pull one versus another one? What do you all want to do?
I'd like to see these as individuals.
Okay. That one?
On these, on the ones to the east and alligator drive, I'd like to see them individual.
Okay, that's fine. So, Ms. Courtney, you've submitted or read what the first one was about. Is any questions, Commissioners, on this first application consideration?
Yes, sir, Courtney, on twenty-one fifty-four Highway ninety-eight East, do they have an existing dock?
Not that I know of, no, there's not an existing dock there. This one in the middle, that's another parcel.
Okay, because I always thought that was his dock.
No, he said that dock didn't belong to him.
Is somebody else's?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, so much for them repairing right lands, so.
But he actually has a home on.
I've always thought it was his dock. That it used, the property used to belong to Branch Mahaffey. And I always thought it was his dock. This is Mr. Jeff Bender.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. A thousand square foot.
I'm trying to show the, the aerial footage, but for some reason, it's coming out like that. There we go.
Yeah. Okay, even shorter than what the other ones are.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second, what questions?
Second by Commissioner Amerson, please proceed.
That, that, it has a house on it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's already got a house on it currently.
I stand by and see. I see it now.
Any additional discussion?
I just like them having houses on it.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say.
It's a lot, lot better.
It winds up being a, a weekend camping trip.
That's right. You're right about that. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous.
All right. The next one I have for you is fifteen sixty-seven Alligator Drive. This one is to construct a three thousand square foot single-family dock that consists of a four-by-three-hundred-and-fifty access dock, a ten-by-sixteen terminal platform, a twenty-by-forty covered boat slip, and a sixteen-by-forty uncovered boat slip. This one was also submitted by Florida Environmental and Land Service, and Land Services Agents for Ashad Dean, who's that applicant?
Don't have a house?
Yes, there's a house on it currently.
House on the, okay, oh, it's over there on the Gulf side, yeah.
Looks like it is right there in between here.
But go the length of the, right there, Courtney, go and leave it out. Okay, the other docks are back this way, right? How many feet, that's a hundred and, okay, a hundred and five feet farther than any of the other docks over there, and this is an aquatic preserve down there, y'all.
Is that, is that to get to a water depth, or what's the problem? What are they looking at there?
It could be to get to the depth. I think this is something that they had to put on there when they applied for their permit with D E P.
Right.
That, that's the shellfish harvesting area. And it just says that it's, it just says prohibited, I don't know what that means.
No, that's saying that shellfish harvesting is prohibited there.
Yeah, I don't think it has anything to do with their dock being put there.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to deny. I don't, I don't like the way it is into the aquatic preserve. I'm concerned about that. Three thousand feet, that's, that's a little bit too much right there. And it going into the aquatic preserve, because you can see the line underneath the, you know, the water. You can see that line, and then out there is the aquatic preserve. So I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Ward, any discussion? But, Ms. Courtney, it's not clear on there, I, I, anyway. You can't see the water depth or anything to do with it, it's that.
No, you can see the shadow.
You can see the shadow.
Yeah, that's all you can see is that shadow.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
It, it stops them from this one, but if they come with a revised dock, it doesn't, they don't have to wait a year. They can't just apply for the same thing.
Okay, I, I, I want to, I want to tell you now, I knew you was gonna come up with something like that.
Yeah.
I knew you was.
Yeah.
But I don't mind them going ahead and reapplying and getting back in here in line with the other one, but that will not go with me.
Okay, so they changed it, you don't mind them?
I'm not gonna tell them that. I'm not gonna tell them that.
Okay.
But if you.
Too late.
I know, but what I'm saying is, three, you see what I'm saying?
Mr. Chairman, they couldn't submit the same application, but with the, they'd have the one-year waiting period, but they can submit a substantially modified application immediately if they want to.
Right.
I believe a hundred and five feet would be substantial.
Exactly.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous.
I ain't trying to, I, I'm not trying to give somebody a hard time. But when I see that, and, and I know the aquatic preserve and how the boundaries go, that just bothers me.
There's your depth, your depth's right there. Three and a half, three and a half.
What, that three and a half right there? Okay, so that's three feet.
Uh huh.
That's what they're trying to do, trying to get out into that six-foot of water. But I'm, I'm looking also where they've got bigger vessels on these other docks, so it's not, you know, I mean, it's not like they can.
Yeah.
Dr, you know.
Yeah, they're gonna just have to modify. That, that's the way we started out the docks years ago, we started them out trying to get them all one length.
Yeah, like this one over here, like he was saying, this one over here on the right-hand side, and this one over here are both kind of staying out of that harvesting area. They're kind of angled a little bit to stay out of that.
Mm-hmm. All right, Ms. Courtney.
Okay. All right, the last, um, critical shoreline I have for you is twenty-one eighteen Highway ninety-eight East. This is for a commercial dock that consists of a four-by-one-hundred-and-fifty access pier and a six-by-forty terminal platform and four uncovered boat slips. This one's for, also submitted by Florida Environmental and Land Services Agents for Eddie Goldson applicant. This property is zone C three, commercial recreational. He's already started building on the project for the commercial site plan that you guys approved a couple of months ago, so he's just adding a commercial dock, and that will serve only for the people who stay in those recreational homes.
Have you got an aerial view?
Uh, yes, I do.
Hand me that, because I like seeing it. And he's got a, okay, hold on. Four uncovered boat slips, right there.
Yeah, because this, I think this is gonna, none of those is four, four home, little commercial homes, so it's basically just for, he's making sure that he can max out them in case he's got all four homes with people in them that they have access to that boat here.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did look up the, because I was like, I saw the four boat slips, and in my thoughts, I'm thinking, this is, I don't know about that, I didn't really like the fact of four boat slips, but I did look up the, the zoning code, and it does, does state under the C, C three zoning that you could have, it's a marina essentially, so. So four, I think, is to me, he could probably do more if he won't based on, just simply based on that zoning code, but he's doing four, so I just keep that in mind, too.
So it's a pleasure of the board.
Yeah, they're, they're building it now.
Oh, okay.
So they're in the process.
And that, he's not asking for, let me see. He's not asking for boat lifts or anything, he's just wanting to basically appear with four uncovered boat slips.
Well, with commercial, you can't call it a, a pier, it's basically a dock.
A dock, okay.
Mm-hmm. With slips.
And it doesn't look like it's out in the water super, super far.
That's about as far as it's gonna go out into the water right there.
Yeah, not too far. How far is it out in the water, Ms. Courtney? Eighty-seven feet?
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-seven feet, wow.
Yeah, you got your depth on that, Bob, it's like three, four, five feet.
It's shallow, and you can tell over here how shallow it is.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go and make a motion to approve this, I don't, I don't see any problem with this.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Could you, could you scroll that back up with the actual plans of the dock, Courtney, please?
Right here.
Yeah, right there. I'll second it. You said that he could potentially, with this zone, he could go further?
He can, he can do a bigger, yeah, he can do like an extra marina.
Because it, it classifies it as a marina, if under the C three designation. So by him doing four, to me, is conservative.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Amerson to approve. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I oppose.
All right, let the record reflect, it's a three-to-one vote. Go ahead, Ms. Courtney.
Okay. Um, next I have Sand Oaks Beach Final Plat. This was thirteen lots. That was, oh, where's my, my little notes? Thirteen lots for Sand Beach Oak Summer Camp and West, Summer Camp West, St. Teresa. This was approved with the P U D back in September second, two thousand and three. Basically, they're just moving on to the, the next phase for their final plat on this one for these thirteen lots. They've met all of the minimum requirements for the lot sizes. Acreage as, as outlined in their P U D that was approved, and the board did recommend approval for this.
And this is part of the P U D for Summer Camp West?
Yes.
That's part of that another phase of it.
Yeah. They just took it as a, as a phase at a time.
So, Mr. Chairman, a question, with any P U D, they start them, they obviously do them in phases, so every phase that they, they get ready to start doing, they have to come back to the board to get the permission?
For a final, yes, just for a final plat review, to make sure nothing's changed and.
And is this consistent with what it was before?
Yes.
What we, what we basically take them back when they were building it is, once you get just about through with one phase, then you come back for approval. And then that way, we base it on what they've done prior.
And not only that, but, you know, you only have a year to start doing any type of construction when you get approval from the board. So by doing it in phases, that gives them more time instead of having to come back for reapproval if that year runs out.
That's why we put in a P U D.
Yeah.
Sir, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, sir, I may be Walter. The person's gonna be developing the property, and also owning the property, and I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do y'all have any additional questions, or what's the pleasure of the board?
The pleasure of the board is gonna go ahead and sense it's within the P U D. That was already for Summer Camp West. Go ahead and make a motion to approve the thirteen lot.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Courtney, you have anything else?
I do, so I have a couple things to bring forward to you. The first thing on my action item list for my report is the approval of the agreement with A R P C for geospatial planning support and services. We did originally do it with them back in two thousand and one of October. And now they've got new software, you know, she, basically what it helps us with my G I S mapping, the flood mapping, they kind of assist us with a lot of things. They've got new software where they can kind of help us out even more. The only change or difference that I saw from last year's to this year's is the annual went from ten K to fifteen K, and that's just because of the.
The difference.
Yeah, the difference. And then the hourly went from fifty to seventy-five. But other than that, for all of the, the countless more things that they'll be able to assist us with, I think it's more than, it's probably less than what we should be giving them.
And just to make sure the board is aware, they've also, I've been involved in discussions because I'm the chair of the board. They've also, not just for us, for all the partners involved, have hired more people, got more, a better software platform, and went out and bought technology like drones and different stuff that they're going to be able to use to help them facilitate and make sure that they're doing the job, not just doing the job, but they're doing as accurately as possible for, for the partnership.
All motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous.
Um, the second action item I have is my board, my P C A board is kind of dwindling. I've lost two board members, and at the end of the year, I'll lose one more. So we've got two vacant seats for District Two and then for District Three. So I didn't know if you guys wanted to. Also, I didn't know if we wanted to bring up, I don't know. I don't know if you want to bring that up or not.
Well, I mean, we, we can try to have that discussion with the Commissioners and see if we can get rid of that some people.
Okay.
You know what I mean, that's.
I, I, I'll bring somebody to the board next, next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried to go out there saying yesterday, and he wasn't home, so.
Okay, just tell him to send me an email with his request, and I can get all his information.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that.
And anybody else who you think might be a good candidate, just let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney. Anyone have anything for Ms. Courtney?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
One, on the, the board vacancies. It's gonna become more and more difficult to get volunteers to be on these boards. I know we're having issues with some of our, our other boards that we're trying to get volunteers for. So we need to come up with a plan in the future to facilitate still making decisions and, and things for our county and for our citizens, potentially without a. things for our county and for our citizens, potentially without a board, an advisory board. I'm all about advisory boards, but some people, let's face it, they don't have the time to volunteer. And I'll be honest with you, I would not wanna volunteer for the P and Z board. It's not an easy job. They get threats, they get, well, you don't, you know, they, I get it. And there's a lot of information that they need to be aware of before they make these decisions. So I just wanna just say that, but also, on another thing, as we're moving forward with these docks, I know that we do not allow secondary structures on a, a piece of property with a primary structure first. I'm just one of five, but, um, I feel like that we may need to look at, instead of, of, uh, approving these docks without, uh, without, uh, a primary structure also needs to be addressed. Because I think what's gonna happen is already kinda what's happened is we're approving these docks with lifts with no structure. And as Commissioner Amerson said earlier, people are coming out, putting their campers. I know we have an ordinance where they can stay seven, fourteen days, but what they're doing is taking advantage of that. They're coming out, they're putting two or three, uh, campers on one lot, they're utilizing this dock, they're renting them out. And we just need to maybe put a stop to that. That's just my opinion. But I think we need to maybe do an ordinance, or I don't know if we'd have to do an ordinance, but I think that's something, I think that we, moving forward, need to only allow docks that already have a primary structure.
Or either have a building permit.
Or have building permit, correct.
Yeah, to elaborate on that further, here's the other issue I need to, so a dock is one thing, but a dock with boat lift requires power.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And if they get power, then they can do a bunch of things that, you know.
Yep.
You can fly them to the radar, very, and I'm a pro at flying them to the radar, too.
Well, I thought.
That's exactly what, I, I'll, I'll admit it.
Yeah, but I thought we approved it not going forward unless it was a house there.
That's on, that's on, that's on like a pole barn, that's a secondary structure.
Secondary structure, we never refer to a dock as a secondary structure.
Well, I know, I know when it was the P and Z, and we told them to, we told, uh, way back there. You remember mine?
Yeah, I remember.
Because I want, I wanted something there to where the cat setters and the flounder, floundermen could go up over the dock, because some of them are so low that they can't go up underneath the dock, so.
Yeah, that's just building them higher, though. That's not keeping them from being built.
That's the only, only problem.
But no, what I'm saying is, we said at that time, unless there was a house on the structure, they couldn't have a dock. Because we had the instant, remember, since you remember, Michael, we had the instant out there at Three Rivers.
I don't know if I remember Three Rivers, but I remember we used to make sure every single, basically what Commissioner Amerson was doing today is we used to do that every single time, was there a structure or plans for a structure. That's how I remember it, we did it way back.
There had to be some.
It seems like something changed at some point, and then it was.
I guess.
Yeah, I know we, we had to have to show that they could build a structure on the property without needing a variance to build the dock.
Maybe that's what it was.
I think that's what it was.
And I know, Mr. Chairman, Courtney has, has had decisions on that, or discussions on that, but I just, I don't know, like I said, I think that it's gonna become an issue, as the chairman stated, you know, they got power. He's just saying they're not gonna go hook up a camper or whatever, so, something we need to look into.
Yep, and it's, it's the only way we'll be able to stop, because some of them kind of fly under the radar where they get power, Duke gets pow- put power to it without us knowing that they're putting power to some of these, these, um, docks. Um, because we're not giving them approval for it, but then it's too late for us to do anything, so, um, however y'all wanna move forward.
Yeah, the, the issue is, once Duke does give them power, it's kinda, I mean, we can, of course, there's things we can do. It's not completely too late, but it's very difficult to try to get the power company to get involved in all that discussion. 'Cause they're just there to hook up power there.
Yep.
Now, when I first come on the board, people used to be able to come and get a temporary power pole permit. They can't do that anymore. Just for this reason, to try to keep people being able to fly them to the radar.
Hold on, what side of the camera you're on?
I guess so.
You know, just, just, Mr. Chairman, just so the public understands, because, I mean, you know, some people probably sitting there going, here, they're gonna tell us what to do on our property again. This does not benefit us at all.
No.
When they bring a, a, put a pole barn on it, put a camper under it, that didn't help our tax base one bit. And, and, you know, for the residents here that, that may criticize us on what we're talking about and discussing moving forward, they need to understand that we're still absorbing that eight percent, you know. We've been sitting here all day talking about ninety to ninety-two percent of the property is government-owned, with the other eight percent, we're still absorbing it. And, and then if we allow someone, and I hate to use Georgia, 'cause that's where my wife's from, she'll probably beat me, but, let somebody from Georgia come in here and buy a lot that's on the water, and then they wanna get, wanna get a pole barn put up, you know, because they're gonna build a house, and it never shows up.
We don't allow that anyway.
And now here you got, uh, docks going in, but you just had a weekend retreat right there. And it's not helping us one bit with our tax issues.
Yep, and it's the campers that's becoming.
So that mean, I'm just, I just wanna put that out there that way, that, that our local people, that are residents here, and not weekend warriors, understand that's our approach with it.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, do we need to, is it an ordinance, is, we didn't, do we need to, or is it something that you guys, Courtney, can just?
I'm gonna bring it up to my P and Z board at the next meeting, put it on my, um, report to them to see, um, how they feel about that. Basically, not approving, and I think they're probably okay with it, not approving any type of, um, dock permit without a primary structure on the property. And then we can go from there.
Yep, make sure you mention to them as well about the whole lot line moving to.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing.
Yes.
Code enforcement, I see your informational item, zoning violation letters.
Yes.
Okay, can you elaborate on that? Do you wanna elaborate on that?
Yeah, so, my issue is, um, when I go out and I do my investigations, um, a lot of the times, I don't have any authority to go up to somebody's door. If they're, they don't have, a lot of them don't have a mailbox here, a lot of them don't have a primary home here, but like they're, for one, I'm just gonna, one instance, where the guy's living on his RV who's supposed to pull a building permit years ago, and he still hasn't pulled a building permit. Um, I can't give him a letter. We don't speak the same language, but he can read. But I don't have the authority to go up and serve him a letter. Um, the only way I can have, I have three letters basically that need to be served, 'cause I know the people are there. I know that a lot of them are refusing the, um, letters, but if we can get like a citation or something, a code enforcement officer will be able to serve that paperwork to them and not just get it turned away.
Can, can you do it through Steve, the building official?
Nope.
Can you do it through the attorney?
We would have to go through the attorney, because I tried to go through circuit, I don't.
Circuit.
Yes, the processor, but it has to be an open case in order for us to do that, so.
Wait, to serve someone?
Yeah.
That's what Debbie Fairclaw's for. Thirty-five bucks, serve them all day long, rain or shine. I do it all the time.
Is she just a regular processor?
She's a certified processor. I mean, you just find approved delivery of a document or something.
Yeah.
Oh, that'll work all day long.
What's her name?
Debbie Fairclaw. She's my go-to bulldog, such as rain or shine, she does not stop.
Do we need to have something with her, or just by?
We'll talk.
Okay. But, Mr. Chairman, that being said, you know, we've been harping on code enforcement. What's the, I know our budget's been approved, it's October first, and we're in the new budget cycle. Where are we at with our code enforcement officer? I know we were gonna subcontract it out, and this might could go under your report, but since she's talking about it.
We actually haven't, yeah, I haven't moved on it yet to, to run an ad, if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's. I mean, me personally, I mean, I thought we've already discussed that, and we already, this is something that we, we gotta have it. When we talk about this St. George Island and all these field dirt and all these ordinances and all, who's gonna, ordinance is only as good as it, it can be enforced. And, and when we do that, we're gonna have to have enforcement, and it can't be Courtney and Steve. It's gonna have to be, and again, I want somebody proactively going out looking at stuff, not just someone saying, oh, I gotta complain, I need to go look at it. No, I want someone on the boots on the ground, looking for stuff.
Yeah, I think that, my issue was, I, forgive me, I thought we were still trying to decide whether we were going to deal with the Sheriff's Department doing it, or we're gonna go out for a vendor, basically, that does it.
I think Courtney maybe if it's, I know she not want that.
Raise your right hand.
Well, the only thing is, it, it's because of safety of it. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot, um, to do with that. I mean, I know, um, some law enforcement officers, they're, they're, I'm saying somebody has to be licensed to carry, but I don't feel comfortable, especially with living in a county, you know, I've got a family that I have to look out for, and some people can get a little. I'm tough, but I ain't that tough.
Or do you need a motion to go ahead and?
No. I'll bring the ad to you guys, you guys approve, we'll go from there.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's look at that. We can always, if we don't get enough response, or if that don't go right, then we can readjust and do different. But I think we need to put it out there and kinda see what happens.
Okay.
To throw Michael a lifeline here, I was under the impression as well that we were discussing about possibly privatizing or getting a company to come in, that's why.
And I did reach out to a couple of companies with no response, and a lot of them, they don't do the code enforcement part of it.
I'll, I'll just warn you guys, we're gonna have an issue with, uh, a lot of people, they might do it as part of, of, of offering other services, like billing inspections, but to do it, uh, nobody likes doing it, let's just be very honest with you. Yeah, it's, but we'll try, we gotta try, but it'll start somewhere.
But I might just, if we don't do something, we're gonna be in.
That's right.
Yeah. And I have one other thing for Cheryl. Um, I forgot to put this on report, I'm sorry. So the Lenard Village fence update, um, I'm getting ready to send response letters regarding those who are not in compliance. Did you wanna give them, as the amount of days, um, I could give them thirty days, I can give them ninety days to come into compliance, so it's up to you.
It doesn't matter to me. I, how many, uh, uh, fences do we have?
I think four.
About four of them?
Yeah, and I just wanna be able to give them enough time to get into compliance.
Is there any language in what we already have?
No.
Is it that special zoning?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. There's no, no set compliance date, but I, with fences and, and the way the fences are, no, some companies don't come out and you have to be like on a list, so I just wanna be able to give them a sufficient time to.
To take the fence down from eight foot, 'cause most of them is eight foot, down to the five foot is required by.
Plus, they have to have paperwork to turn in, they have to, you know, to show that they did, they are in compliance.
Ninety days?
Yeah, ninety days, okay, that'll give them enough time.
Either sixty or ninety, but not thirty. Thirty's not enough time.
Sixty or ninety, okay. Okay, and that's it, that's all I have.
And, and you don't worry about going out there and doing what you're supposed to be doing? I ain't never bothered you about it.
Ms. Sanders. This has nothing to do with anybody else. If you see me leave at three fifty-five, it's because I have an East Water Water and Sewer meeting at four. Go ahead, Ms. Sanders.
Okay.
Commissioners, we've already, already covered items one and two in my report earlier in the meeting when Jennifer Daniels was here. Um, action item number three, uh, last month, the county met with Triumph representatives here in Appalachia Cola. And in addition to discussing ideas for economic development at the county airport, there was also discussion about conversion to a new communication system for first responders. There are changes on the horizon with the State Emergency Response Slurs System, and at some point, the county will be mandated to transition to a banded eight hundred megahertz radio system. The Sheriff's Department is set to receive a one point five million dollar grant from the Florida Legislature to outfit their department with radios that are compatible with the existing system and the state's new eight hundred megahertz system. Although the Triumph program is funded by settlement funds due to impacted counties from the Deepwater Horizon oil spill, the program has strict requirements for eligibility and local match. The one point five million dollar equipment grant for the Sheriff's Department can be listed as part of the county's match for the Triumph pre-application, along with an additional twenty-five thousand dollar local effort towards the project analysis and planning phase. A fully operational and effective radio communication system will be extremely expensive, but is of paramount importance for life-saving response services. In Waukulla County, a roughly twelve million dollar project included the property acquisition and construction of seven radio communications towers, programming base stations, and the purchase of radios for all first response entities. Walton County is also in progress with their new system through Triumph Now. One side benefit to the construction of new radio communication towers is the ability for telecommunications providers to rent tower space to be able to provide better internet broadband and cellular service within the county. This system upgrade will not only provide reliable communications and equipment for first responders, which will include law enforcement, cities, county departments, ambulance service, school district, and volunteer fire departments, but it will also enhance the county's broadband and cellular access for all residents. Board action to submit a pre-application to restore its Triumph Gulf Coast for approximately ten million dollars for the analysis, planning, design, construction, and implementation of an eight hundred megahertz countywide first responder communication system.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanna make sure that we still get something up Highway sixty-five. I'm so sick and tired of not having service for our people up that way, so I'm still gonna fight for that.
It should include sixty-five and sixty-seven.
It will, it will be a, a net across the entire county.
Yes.
Well, if y'all get it, if you get me over there towards, I mean, I'm just like five miles from Stock Choppy through the woods. If you get me there and they get something down that way, then I can tap on this.
We can't do that, just.
Well, whoever else is, the bear, hey, the bears and the hogs.
Might have a bear nine one.
Yeah, they might need nine one one for us.
So it's ten millions, what we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay, uh, any more discussion before we vote?
So you, you, uh, said ten million, because Waukulla's with twelve.
Correct, yeah, we don't feel like ours will be as expensive as Waukulla.
It shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Would you have a motion, second? Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, next item number four, at the October third meeting, the county opened bids for the construction of the Eighth, Ninth, and Tenth Street dune walkovers on St. George Island. Six bids were received and released to Coastal Engineers M R D and Associates for review and recommendation. M R D and Associates has, has reviewed the bids which were submitted, and they are recommending awards to the lowest bidder, MKM Quality Construction Incorporated, Incorporated, who was the same vendor who constructed the dune walkover at Third Street West earlier this year, for the base bid of one hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents, and the alternate bid items of four thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars, as all paperwork and documentation was in order. These dune walkovers are being replaced as part of the county's beach erosion control efforts. Dune walkovers to protect dunes and vegetation from foot traffic, post and rope fencing, and parking stops to prevent forward encroachment onto the dunes, and planting of sea oats at accesses funded by tourist development sales tax proceeds. Board action to authorize the chairman to sign the attached notice of award to MKM Quality Construction Incorporated in the construction contract documents once available.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next item is number five, attached are resolutions for the adoption of unanticipated revenues as part of the end of the year fiscal year bookkeeping. These funds were not included in your original adopted twenty-two, twenty-three budget, because at the time of budget adoption, they were unanticipated. Florida Statute one twenty-nine allows a county sixty days after the end of a fiscal year to incorporate unanticipated revenues into the prior year's budget. As grant invoices are processed for work completed through September thirtieth, resolutions and amendments will be part of my report through the end of November. The first resolution is for one hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars in state grant funds received from the Florida Department of Transportation for the Airport Obstruction Removal Project Phase One. The second resolution is for six hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars in state and federal grant funds received from the Florida Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration for the rehabilitation of the apron pavements at the airport. And the third resolution is for six hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars in state and federal FEMA funds received for the reconstruction of Alligator Drive in the current fiscal year. Board action to adopt the attached budget resolutions.
So move.
So, motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next item number six, each year, the county formally updates the capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan to reflect upcoming goals and projects within the county. This list assists with the planning process and grant funding applications. A copy of the current capital improvement schedule is attached to this report. Uh, we're requesting board action to approve the scheduling and advertisement of a public hearing to update the capital improvement plan.
Any? Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous, forward.
Okay, uh, next item number seven, strong winds toppled and damaged the high density, that, high-density four-foot by eight-foot entrance sign at Kendrick Park several weeks ago. Sign design has submitted the attached estimate to replace and install the new sign. With the park size, parking facilities, and variety of sports fields, replacement of the damaged sign does align with the county's desire to designate the park as a sports arena in hopes of promoting sports tourism for the county and hosting statewide tournaments in the future. Board action to approve of the estimate and design for the sign at Kendrick Park.
Before we do this, let's talk about this. Um, Frank Brown Park, they're in, uh, Panama City Beach, City Frank Brown Park Sports Complex.
Well, they actually don't have, um, some of the same limitations that we do.
They don't have this.
No, because they're not physically constrained, and they take over ten million dollars in a year.
Okay, now, are we gonna be naming all?
We're gonna have to potentially rename all of them and add to the name, yes, to fit the.
Just put the arena on there? Now, if we're gonna put arena on all of them. Now, if we're gonna put arena on all of them, I don't have no problem with it. But I don't want Carabelle to have one sticking out there saying, "Sports Arena", and they expect, when somebody sees an arena, it's different than a sports complex.
Oh, we're just getting started, Commissioner.
I know it, I know it. Well, a sports complex, we've been like that for, since two thousand eight, somewhere like that. Okay. Sounds like Katie made it.
So, so do we have a motion?
Okay, we'll make the motion, but let y'all know that it's, ain't, ain't everybody else's arena. I'm gonna come back and add, or be taken off.
Arena seems to outrate complex. Arena is a little more...
A little complex.
Little higher than complex.
Yeah, and, and I like the idea of putting the, uh, the side of what we have to offer out there, the different parks and stuff, because it does make a difference. I mean, I, I want them to know and, um, that we have more than just ball fields out there.
And actually, Kendrick Park is more of an arena, but so you got a football
Yeah.
field over there nearby, and you, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's the bigger of the three, I mean.
Just had that sign we painted about six months ago.
I know, yeah.
So you made a motion to approve, Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, sir.
We have second by Commissioner Amerson. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, commissioners, next item, uh, the Lanark EMS station. Uh, the draft architectural renderings and a preliminary site layout was attached to this report. The design and permitting work is approximately fifty percent complete at this time, so, um...
And I did notice, Ms. Aaron, I forgot about it earlier today. I did notice this morning that we have the handicap access in place for the E V, access for the building.
Yep, if we're working on it for...
Working on it for Carabelle too, correct?
Correct.
For that, that's over there.
And, and the library.
Yes.
Yep. Yep, um, and actually, the, um, the lights at Roanoke Park, um, they, the, uh, switch was flipped, so the lights are operational. Right now, of course, we don't have them on because the field improvements have to be done at this time. Um, and we're also, on Thursday, we are meeting onsite at the, um, S G I fishing pier access road because unfortunately, that was the only damage that the county received during Hurricane Idalia. It was, it washed out that road right there, so we'll be meeting onsite with engineers and FEMA reps on Thursday.
We were lucky then.
Yes, yeah, very lucky, yep.
All right, thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, I'll try to get to it quickly as possible, so the chairman can get out of here. Page thirteen, um, C O's Garden Club Landscape Estimate, that's, you know, we're trying our best to open up that Garden Club building. Uh, we got a three thousand dollar quote from L N S, from Carabelle, L N S Lawn Service, to do a lot of work. Uh, there's a lot of work that has to be done on that property. I don't think it's unreasonable. I'm asking the board to approve that quote.
And, and Mr. Chairman, this, this is, it, when I saw this, I'm like, that's a lot of money for this, but in my opinion, it, it's a building I think we're gonna be able to use. It's gonna become use, very useful, and, uh, it comes out of the courthouse maintenance budget
It does.
that we have specifically for this purpose.
And if you saw their quote, very detailed of what they're gonna have to leave and trim and pull and, yeah.
And it was a lot of trees overhanging too that's causing issues, so I'll, I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And tomorrow, I meet with E triple C to discuss this.
Okay.
Uh, this, uh, I don't know if y'all saw, there's a white van, Honda van outside. Looks a little rough on the outside. That's a sheriff's all ice cream vehicle. I'm going to talk to E triple C, Commissioner Sanders.
I didn't even see it.
E triple C about, um, actually giving them that vehicle. They could use that towards a trade or down payment for more dependable vehicle to move the, the senior citizens around.
Yeah.
That's our intention.
I want you to take me, show me that van, I wanna get done.
I could give you the keys if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Ticket for a run.
No, I...
Right outside.
I don't wanna break down, anyway.
I know.
Moving on.
Okay, item two, uh, Mr. Collins submitted the attached F D O T, uh, P T G A agreement. It's for the West Hanger development. Uh, John was here at some point, uh, Mr. Kirschbaum is out there, Ted is out there. They've had multiple presentations about this hangar program. We got eight hundred thousand dollars to work for design and construction. I just need you guys to approve that, so we can start that project.
So move.
I'll say.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Uh, Steve, tell me, Ted, Pappy, am I saying that right? Pappy lights?
Yeah.
Okay, Pappy lights repaired. Uh, you know, it was reported by FAA at their last inspection. We needed to repair some lights on runway one-four. I conferred with Mr. Boss, tell her about it. He said, yes, let's get it done as soon as possible. Mr. Collins had T C A come down. They were working the lights prior to this. Uh, they gave us a proposal of twelve fifty plus the cost of any parts because they were kinda giving us a number in the dark. Um, they've actually been able to repair it. I haven't gotten the invoice yet, but it should be in that neighborhood. I will let you know, but I, I just, I would hit it and approve it. I understand that you guys would want that done as soon as possible.
Okay.
So I just need board action to approve the repair.
So move.
Yes.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Item four, the, the Christmas, East Point Christmas Parade and Celebration. The route is changed slightly, but, you know, that, it is what it is. They do it every year. I have the route there in front of you. The reason we need it done as soon as possible because now Courtney has to fill out the F D O T, uh, permission, you know, to get it done, the authorization. So, uh, we'll start working on that tomorrow.
All right.
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And I should have brought up number five, uh, when the sheriff, when Jenny was here earlier. Uh, last week, it was actually the day after our last meeting, she sent those forms from F D L E to have them signed. They had Ms. Griffith review the forms before I asked the chairman to sign them. They were signed and sent to F D L E before the deadline, and we just need, God bless you, Commissioner. I took it away, and we just need ratification, uh, a motion to ratify the chairman's signature on those two F D L E forms. Something that's done, basically, the E E, the E E E O P is done every five years, so the, the budget certification is every year.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, item six. So, um, here we are with the, to fill those vacant advisory boards, uh, seats. Commissioner Ward was discussing that earlier. So no one has, uh, sent in anything for District One for the local technology planning team. The chairman is working on that with some of his constituents. Mr. John Berry is the only person that submitted a letter of interest for the Regional Rural Transportation Plan Technical Advisory Committee. Uh, A R P C came and talked to you guys about that earlier. I see no problem if you want to today as a motion to appoint him. Um, Ms. Mel Kelly and Ms. Rebecca Dolan, she, Ms. Dolan lives on St. George Island. Uh, they both showed interest at the Byway Management Authority. They asked for one, I would send both names if you guys don't mind. Let them see, they, they might need somebody extra on that, uh, that board. I don't think it'll harm, there's any harm in sending both names up for submittal. Uh, Mr. Steve Norton was the only submission for the Airport Operations Economic Development Board. However, Mr. Kirschbaum is sitting out there, they had asked earlier if they could put Mr. Norton's fa, uh, application in with the pool of all applicants that were not, uh, approved, not approved, that's not the right word, that were not appointed when we first started the board. They would like to look at all and make a recommendation back to this board, hopefully the first meeting in November. And I, I'll leave it up for discussion, but that's my recommended motion for each of these, for the three seats. The one, we can't do anything about it till, uh, Chairman Jones is able to speak to his constituents and assign one.
And unfortunately, I didn't get to do that last night. I was speaking to constituents, but it was not about the L two P two board.
So you're just making one motion for all of it?
If, I, yeah, I don't see a problem.
I wanna ask a question though. With the, the last one on the airport board, so we went out and we asked for people that are interested because we wanted to fill the vacancy, we had one response. Why did, uh, why did some of the other applicants that maybe weren't selected before not just reapply? I mean, it was open to them, it was open to them, right?
What, now, what did?
Yeah, well... Yeah, but he said it after we closed the date on it, so, um, but it could have been with the expectation that they thought that the board would have looked at all the, the pool of ones that weren't appointed. That could be it. I'm, I'm answering for people that I really probably shouldn't answer before, but that's the closest thing I could think. But Steve, uh, Steve, uh, Mr. Kirschbaum had asked earlier, before the date had even closed, if we could consider that, and I told him I would ask the board to see if you guys would allow him to consider the ones that were not appointed when we tried to originally...
Allow him or allow the board?
That you guys would allow, oh, I'm sorry, allow the A O E D to look, I'm sorry, I, I, what'd you say, uh, Commissioner? Allow the, the entire A O E D to look at all the applicants, the ones that weren't appointed, and Mr. Norton as one group to see, you know, to make a recommendation.
And it's still up to you guys, one hundred percent.
Hold on, just say, I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, the only, I mean, it's, I don't have a problem either way, but we don't do that with anything else we do. If, if somebody applies for a job with the county and they wind up not getting hired, we don't drag in their applications. Next time, we make them refill out their application. I mean, that, that's all I'm saying.
We, we do, we do.
Yes, it's not about, you know, it's about what we have in front of us.
Yes.
And if we're gonna do that, we need to start doing that everywhere, not just this one instance.
All right, well, may I interrupt?
Excuse me.
Yeah, sure.
Please don't do that.
Oh, no, okay.
Please don't do that.
All right.
You're gonna put me somewhere today I don't need to be.
No, okay.
We've already been through enough. She might not know about it, but it's not gonna be a good day. Thank you.
Yes, um, Commissioner, I hear you. That's, that's true. I just, yes, I, I, I probably, I'd hate to use the word assumption, but I just did that knowing that that board was still kinda new and that, 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 you know, since there weren't many, uh, applicants, we would take advantage of that, but I, I understand what you're saying.
But I'm not pushing you away.
No.
Whatever we're gonna do, that needs to be what we're doing going forward.
Keep the same policy, be consistent. I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, I was under the impression, I can go back and look at our last, when we discussed at the prior meeting, but we was gonna advertise again and include the people that had applied previously.
And that's fine, if that, I just don't...
I mean, I thought that was a discussion that we had had here as a board.
Could have been, I don't know.
And I, I'll go back and look at it, because if that's the case, that could be partially, partially my fault.
Yeah.
Because I was under that impression.
Yeah, but I do, I, I, Chairman, I hear what, what you're saying too, is, yes.
Whatever way we did this, we do the other one.
Or how we've done all the others, we should do this one.
That's right. That's what we're getting at.
That's all.
That's fine, yes, but I'm just saying, as per conversation we had in prior meetings, I was kinda under the impression that we would pick from the people that had previously applied and also advertise to encompass more people to come in if they were, especially now that we're having some progress out there, where some people will be motivated to jump in. Obviously, they're not, but...
So, let me ask you this, maybe make this clear, cause we, we got a lot to do and a short amount of time to do it. Does the board want to, uh, accept and appoint Mr. Berry today, Ms. Kelly, and Ms. Dolan, and then we can talk about Mr. Norton or whoever else at the next meeting?
You want to go ahead and do a motion for those three?
That's what I'm saying. I, I'm not trying to hold this up, and I'm not, I don't, anybody's think I'm prejudiced toward one name and another. That's not what I'm trying to say.
No.
All I'm trying to say is if that's what we're gonna do, I'm fine with it. I just didn't remember that discussion, it's one of those things. But in the interest of time, do we want to move it on, cause we're either gonna adjourn here in about twenty-five minutes or even finish without?
Okay, well, I'll, the thing, we took Michael's recommendation. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, allow John Berry to serve, um, as the Regional Rural Transportation Plan Technical Advisory Committee. Okay, and then, um, also appoint, uh, Ms. Mel Kelly and Ms. Rebecca Dolan, to the Byway Management Authority to see which one they want to do or whatever. So that's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Would the board mind if, if I, given the chance to think through the airport thing, and come back with maybe another proposal?
It's fine, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine with including it if that's what he remembers. I just didn't remember that.
Let me explain something also that we're not, I don't know, this is, this is for, uh, uh, this isn't for one of the primary boards, this is for one of the...
The at-large?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I remember that.
This is one of our backups.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, basically.
Uh, so it's not something that's detrimental.
Yes.
Or anything, I mean, if we gotta...
So we get, we got some time.
If, well, I'm getting at is if we may have caused some confusion, when I say we, I'm speaking about the others.
That'd be both of us.
If I can follow, uh, may have, maybe we need to re-advertise.
Yeah.
And then the people that were previously submitted.
Tell them they have to be submitted, yes.
I would rather do that than to move forward and make them feel excluded of the false information they may have gotten from me, so...
Well, I don't know about the false information, but you said that better than I did. Let me just put it that way. All right. And I'm next, is Mr. Kirschbaum, correct?
Okay, yeah, well, let's see, give me one second, let me pull through everything else just in case. So the reef, item eight, where there's just documents that were signed, that's more for the record, because I signed those documents, Attorney Schuler reviewed them. How about Buddy Ward read some final documents? There was, uh, no, no question with that. The conference, commissioners, I know, look at me strange. You guys don't look at me strange, but if you guys are going to the conference, let Courtney know as soon as you possibly can.
I'm not going.
I'm not going because my coworker is on vacation that week.
Okay. The aquaculture grant, I will put that on the website this, well, probably tomorrow morning, and not to this afternoon. I just wanted to bring it to you first before I had it on the website. Um, and you should have it the next meeting, that breakdown, we've, uh, Erin and I met with Mr. Brian, it's all. Uh, we kinda came up with a format. He sent it to us. We haven't had time to review it and get back to him. And then we'll tweak it, and you'll have that reported at your next meeting.
Okay, it's gonna be the E M S.
E M S and both clinics.
And then it's gonna be the clinic.
And he's gonna try his best to use the same format, so it's easy to follow for all three, okay? And your next meeting is Tuesday at seven, but prior to that, now we have a workshop on Thursday at five. All right.
Actually, a week from Thursday, right?
I'm sorry, a week from this Thursday, yes, next Thursday at five.
Mr. Kirschbaum?
Yeah, I'll make it quick.
Please proceed.
Yeah, and what I was trying to say before, if it's just one person, we just still like the ability to review their credentials and recommend them. That's all. If we only have one recommendation for the airport board. Um, at our last board meeting, we made a few, uh, recommendations to the county. We got them all over to you. Uh, the couple of big ones, we have the rental car business that we totally support that Centric wants to set up at the site. In Centric's lease, there's something called Sasso operations that we had put in there that's the norm at most airports that if you're gonna add businesses under your lease, that those businesses have to be reviewed by the county to see if we want the business and that it could be subject to an additional charge. Um, members of our board went and called around to other airports, and they were commercial airports, they were Tallahassee, they were Panama City. The norm at those airports, uh, Tallahassee is eleven percent of the gross is a surcharge. Panama City, ten percent of, of the ticket is, it's a surcharge. It's not coming out of their pocket. Um, the rentals that Centric is doing right now to pilots, they're charging two hundred twenty-five dollars a day for an S U V, where Enterprise gets a hundred thirty-two at Pen, at Tal, at Panama City. They're charging a hundred seventy-five for an S U V, a regular S U V. It's a hundred fourteen from Enterprise. There's a ton of room, and they're getting all the parking at the airport, they're getting a lot of things at the airport, and they're making a lot of money. The county, God forbid someone like Jangoli walks away, we could use the revenue. So if it's a ninety-dollar, um, rental that they do for a small car, they'd add nine dollars to it, and the county would get nine dollars. But what we don't wanna see is a summary report the end of the month. I don't wanna trust anybody on behalf of the county, and I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, but they should present a detailed report of all the rentals the end of the month, and we should get our percentage, and we could definitely use it. So the A O E D board recommends allowing a rental car company under Centric's control to establish at the airport with a ten percent surcharge to the county with them furnishing detailed auditable reports monthly. And it needs to be for all rentals, not just for every rental that they do out of there. So I'm wondering where you guys stand on that.
Uh, I'm good with doing it, but here's the only thing I would say. As, I don't know how the rest of them are, but as one of the commissioners that I know that have asked them repeatedly about the ability to add rental cars, I would be more in favor of trying to let them get on their feet. I would be more in favor of trying to let them get on their feet, and make sure they're actually gonna be renting these cars, with the caveat that if we allow them to proceed, a year from now, we're gonna be having this discussion. I, I, I'm not for trying to tag them right, you know, at the gate as soon as they start, that they need, also need to make sure we get money. That's just me personally, I'm one of four right now, so everybody else may not feel that way.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, and the reason I don't is that they have a very, very lucrative contract with us. I mean, we have been more than generous with FBO lease, and, and, you know, again, as Mr. Kirshenbaum stated, it, it, it's our obligation as, as board members for the county, we represent the county, it's in the county's best interest that we, you know, get the best bang for our buck, as, as they do too, you know, and, and, you know, our master plan, if I'm not mistaken, has, you know, over, overhead.
Parking coverage for them.
That's in the future, so I mean, it's not like they're getting a vacant field out there that they're just gonna have some old beaters in or something like that. This is, it should be a top-notch service, which I'm sure Centric will provide, because they seem to be a class act. But given, given the generosity that we've given them in the past, I don't see why ten percent wouldn't be more appropriate, like I said, it's a pass-through cost anyway.
Well, that's something that we'd have to do with Attorney Shuler though, right?
Yeah, surcharge, we have to approach that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused about what's happening, because I know under the lease with, oh, God, it's something like Centric, they have a rental car operation, so is this like a second rental car operation that we're talking about?
No, I think that they've never, I think that, that rental car thing was a big deal before COVID, then it kinda went down during COVID, and they're starting, they're talking about starting it back, is that correct?
No, what they had on site was cars for pilots coming into the site, that was their rental operation. Now they wanna do a standalone rental operation to rent to the general public. And, you know, besides the point with this, they went and said to us, when we shook hands on that agreement with them, when me and Otis, when we negotiated, that the sixty-by-sixty hangar, they would allow us to keep equipment in there until we built the building for our equipment at the airport. Now, it's not on paper, now it's not happening. Also, they agreed that they would cut grass at the site until we get an employee in place, there's no grass being cut. They're making a ton of money there, and I'm not opposed to Centric, but I, I, I really think that we ought to not turn away money that we can bring into the county.
I'll, I'll look at whatever contract they bring to me for review, I just didn't, wasn't quite clear what was.
Well, they're talking about adding, let me run it back up to where we actually are, they're talking about adding our current, they're talking about adding rental cars, not just for pilots, but for general public, like if I was going to Tallahassee or somewhere and I wanted to rent a car instead of taking my car, I'd go rent a car. And, and Mr. Kirshenbaum was talking about having an agreement with the county that if they do, start doing rental cars for just the average public, that there's a ten percent fee potentially added to it to be paid to the county.
Yeah, right, I, I got that, but I, I was not expecting this to come up, I haven't reviewed that Centric contract since we executed it way back when, so as long as we're not in violation of that contract in any form, then move on.
So I guess you'll have to bring something back to us, because it had to be legal if we do that, won't it?
Question, by, by a surcharge, do we have to go out to the public to, to tax, to add another tax? Or can we just as a county tax like that?
I don't wanna make a decision here on the spot, I mean, I, I've got the general parameters, we'll make sure it's not in violation of the current, is Centric going to be operating this, these rental cars?
Centric's gonna be operating this.
Okay.
And it's, the question is if there are other businesses that wanna come in, if somebody makes wings, if somebody paints airplanes, and they wanna keep on coming into this airport and working on the Centric's banner, that shouldn't be allowed, and that's why that was in the agreement with the lease.
We'll, we'll just make sure everything's in compliance and bring it back to the board, we all make the decision.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Kirshenbaum.
Okay, and the second thing, and I'll make this quick, is Mark Noble's brought this up at the last meeting, and one hundred ten percent, we were looking to itemize the equipment at the airport that we had, and we said, Ted, can you get into the hangars and take a look at this equipment, tell us what we have? And Ted said he had no keys to the hangars. They are, our hangars, our county's hangars, as landlord, we need to have the keys to our hangars. The airport manages, the county's boots-on-the-ground enforcer of county policy, safety and infrastructure at the airport. The airport manager of this county property necessitates him, or him having keys to the county outbuildings, hangars, equipment, and leased and subleased premises, on clearly identified key tags stored in the lockbox at the county E O C, and Jennifer is okay with that. These keys utilized for repairs, periodic inspections of the facility in compliance with FAA F D O T regulations, and in the event of a fire or natural disaster, this is the norm at any airport. Therefore, the A O E D board recommends the county commission to request immediate copies of all clearly identified keys to all county-owned buildings and equipment at the airport from Centric, and allow the airport manager to make periodic inspections of facilities as he or she deems necessary. So that was our second recommendation.
I thought we already did that.
I think we had, I think we did ours, Mr. Ted, could you come up, please, is that, don't get me.
I was finally out there after leave.
Jessica, you must officially transfer the.
Yes.
What gets me is.
Support the land fund.
Is that we keep going on and on and on about these keys, this is a simple matter, I'm trying to figure out where, where are we not getting? Who, who's, who, Mr. Ted, if you would, please, um, would you mind sharing the podium?
I'm having a bad time, I'm sorry, you're having a bad day?
No, I'm sorry.
What keys don't, what, what keys do you not have, none?
I don't have any keys.
I thought we had a discussion about.
We have discussed it many times, but nothing's happened.
Yeah, I thought Teddy was gonna reach out to them, and if he had problems, he would let me know, but, okay, I mean, do you want me to reach out to Andrew or something, and I'm talking to Ted?
Uh, that's up to the board.
I mean, you're there, what matters, you want, you want me to reach out to them and say, hey, we need to do this process?
That would work.
All right, because the last time I was, I was deferring.
I think we discussed, actually, I, I remember that now, I, I vividly, but it was, it's all coming back. I'd actually told Michael to sit back, give you the opportunity, since you are the manager, to make that, and if, and if you hit a dead end, then we would step in.
That's what I thought.
I'm gonna say, Mr. Chairman. Comment, I, I commented I had no keys, I do have keys to the power vault, and the N D B building is, that's it.
No motion needed.
And.
So we're just, we're, we're just.
And can we also make it within a timeframe, Michael, within a week?
I'm not going to, wait, Steve, I'll, I'll, let me talk, and I'll get back to you.
All right, and that includes the fuel farm, everything, it's the county's property, in fact, the fuel farm, our airport manager should be monitoring the numbers on what's pumped every month, so we're accurately getting the right amount of money for commission on fuel, so we just need to audit stuff. All right, and I'll hit you with the next thing, it's real quick. The meets and bounds of the airport master plan were agreed on in the adopted master plan six months ago. The county tax appraisers map still doesn't reflect the legal property description or the meets and bounds of the property at the county airport. Commissioner Amerson asked Avcon for a flash drive of the meets and bounds of the airport and the legal description. It's over at the tax appraisers office for three months, and nothing's happened yet. So I'm just wondering if the recommendation we were making is that the A O D board recommends the county commission contact the tax appraisers office and prioritizes the updating of the tax map with the proper meets and bounds in the next thirty days, is that a possibility?
Commissioners, yeah, I'll talk to, keep, keep in mind that the property appraisers are new elected constitutional officer, but I will reach out to her staff and talk to her about it. But one thing I, I, I would say, we will, I mean, we can do it, but, Steve, let me, let me say it this way to you, if someone wants to know the true meets and bounds of any property you have in the county, the tax appraisers property map is not the place to go. That's not how you do it, you go to the clerk of court, and you do, well, I'm speaking in some Attorney Shuler, it does for a living, kind of, you know? That, because she will tell you, there's a disclaimer on that map saying, do not use this information for true meets and bounds, in other words, is what she said. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I will contact her, but know that what you're, I think what you're looking for is not the place you want to find it. But I will contact her and her staff and let the board know if there's any issues with it.
As, when the property was removed for the dredge property from the airport, it was done at the tax assessors, tax appraisers office, just like we're asking for this to be done, just the airport property should be clearly identified as airport property, so future commissions don't go and say, well, let's get rid of that, so that's all we're looking for.
Hopefully, future commissions would do like what Avcon did and everybody else does, they do a title search in the clerk's office. That's the way you do it, but I, I will contact, that's what the board wants, I will contact Rhonda and discuss it with her, and let her know. Ask her, how long will it take and what?
Is that gonna give you the correct answer, that?
I'll ask.
Would you be, wouldn't you be better off to do a, a search?
Uh, no, no, I, I understand what Steve is asking for, so I, I will just go, I'll, I'll talk to her staff first and see if, then if I need to talk to her.
All right, one last thing, I hate having two sets of glasses. We have, the marketing is already taken care of, we spoke to Michael, and I've been reaching out to Haney College School Aviation, I've reached out to Tyndall Air Force Base, I've reached out to several different people on our airport, and I'm doing it from my, my old Auto Glass email, so I asked, could I have a county email address for the A O E D? And any correspondence that was sent would be C C to the county coordinator, and we have an email address now. And then the last thing is foliage, weeds, grass, and sweeping, there's immediate issue at this airport without this employee in place, that there is grass growing up over runway lights, through cracks in the asphalt. Somehow, we have to get somebody in there within the next couple of weeks to do something at the airport, or expedite the hiring of this employee that's going to be doing it. So what our recommendation was to expedite the hiring of an employee with contracted duties at the airport to rectify the situation, or potentially use existing county employees to do a last cleanup at the airport with the equipment before the growing season is over.
I think the closing date is a Friday?
That's what I was about to ask you.
Yeah, I think it's Friday, and.
This Friday?
Yes, I think it's this Friday, and from there we make a decision based on the applicants. I will say, based on our policy, Commissioners, you're aware of this, if anybody wants to transfer with, from within the county, that's automatic, there's no, you know, if there are two that wants to transfer, then there's a review, if it's one that wants to transfer, it's basically automatic, and I do have one in the portal that wants a transfer.
Just one?
Do we have any, have, do we have any that's applied that you know of?
Uh, no, I haven't received anything else, I'll, I'll go double check.
I was just curious.
And this would take them from, well, your county employees would be number three operator, number three, whatever.
Yeah, kind of.
And this is gonna take them to a number six, did you say, or who said that?
The pay grade.
Yeah, pay grade is different, I have to ask Erin, she, she did that part.
But all they're gonna do is mow the grass on the airport?
Oh, no, they have to, uh, uh, deal with some heavy equipment, not, not heavy, heavy equipment, but. I know you wanna explain equipment, but this, a little bit more than what, and I'm going based on the one that applied, yes, they're gonna, he, he, if he gets, if it works out, he's gonna be responsible for more than he's currently responsible for.
I know some of the employees contact me, they're concerned.
Yes, well, one, one in the inner department.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That, that's, that's what kinda gets me, you know, people sit back, wanna critique things, but it's, it's a big responsibility. They ain't going out there weed-eating and, and, and jumping on the mower, there's gonna be electrical stuff, there's gonna be, if, if you go and look at the advertisement, but I've had some of these same people, or some of the people that's come around to me and made some, I said, well, put your name in the hat. But I don't wanna do that, I don't wanna lose my, my Friday off, I said, well, then, stay and do what you're doing. So, I mean, that's just plain and simple.
I think, I was about to say, Mr. Chairman, I think a lot of the issue is, is too, is, looking at it, it does look like someone, say, from Parks and Rec could, could basically do this, and they're getting pay grades, or, sorry, was it pay grade three, and this airport guy's going to get six, and so it's more money and this, and I talked to Erin about this, and I spoke to Mr. Ron about this, and, and it's, he's, this person's gonna have to be on his own, basically know all the, I, I should say, laws and regulations the FAA is requiring. I mean, it's a lot more than just going to the park and mowing, that's not to demean anybody, but I, I did research, and they, they do, there, there has to be certain, the grass can't be in any of the cracks on the runways, they are gonna be unsupervised, I do agree that, you know, the pay grade three to pay grade six, and they're not doing that much more, but they, they kinda are, I don't think that driving a tractor is any more of a job than, or a certification than driving a lawnmower, it's really no different, I know a tractor's bigger, anyway. Point being, the Centric, it's not their con, you said they, they mowed the grass currently, but haven't, is it in their contract that they're supposed to be doing this?
No, it's us now.
It, it was a verbal agreement.
Like three months, right?
Yeah, so give me three months, because this is what was stated, it was me, Mr. Kirshenbaum, and both Andrew and Tara was present. And it's not in their contract, I said, but give it, if, if we can get this contract, this agreement, FBO agreement, move forward. I said, the way it's gonna be is it's gonna open us up some revenue where we can hire somebody dedicated to the airport. And contingent upon that verbal agreement, I said, give me, you know, and, and, and if memory serves me right, I believe, Andrew said, well, I don't wanna, you know, sit here and drag this out. I said, no, I'm talking, you know, as soon as we can get the contract completed, you know, give me three months. Now, it was a verbal agreement between us, and I believe Tara sent an email out that said that we were dragging our feet, so to speak, but if you'll go back and look, we didn't finish that contract, or complete that contract to the end of, it was the last week of July. So technically, we're right within the timeframe that I told them. You know, but, but between now and then, they haven't upheld the verbal agreement and maintained it, because they said they're lacking personnel to, to do it, so that, that was their excuse.
And I, I stand corrected, the twenty-seventh, it's next Friday, because I wanted to run one more week in, in the newspapers, it's running Thurs, this Thursday, and it closes on twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Okay?
But, but that, just to, to give y'all an update of what, that was, that was the conversation that myself, Tara and Andrew, and Mr. Kirshenbaum was present during that, that was the conversation we had. So, if, I, I'm not looking at a calendar right in front of me, but if I'm, if I'm correct, I think we're right in the timeline of what we are, what we told them.
All right, and just the last thing is, I just wanna tell Cheryl, thank you very much for your appointment of Mark Noble. There was friction in the beginning, but he is a gifted individual, I love having him on this board, and he's really been participating in these meetings, and I've been real happy. Just wanna let you guys know before I roll away, the Tyndall meeting went terrific with the commander, vice commander, with me and Otis, and I'll give you more on that the next board meeting. And Haney College School of Aviation just gave us a little brush-up of what their facility's like, and that they're totally booked out. And I met with, with Michael's blessing and the chair's blessing, I met with Cory from Triumph and her head economist, and discussed things at the airport, just to get an idea and a feel for what they could or couldn't do. And they were very receptive to having a follow-up meeting with stakeholders to talk about our airport and what they could do for us. But what they're looking to do is bring in other entities to do funding, to do match funding to them. So that's all I have to say, I just wanted to bring you guys up on what's going on. And I'm sorry, I'm just not myself today, I lost my mom last week, and it was very hard to get stuff done, so.
Sorry for your loss, Mr. Steve, thank you for being here today.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Ted.
On the person doing this job that we're hiring, it'll be more than mowing the grass, that's just a small part, they'll be spraying herbicide, they'll be doing maintenance on the equipment, oil changes, minor maintenance, of course. Also, building maintenance, they'll be working on doors, on the hangars, all kinds of, it's kind of a do-it-yourself type person, and the most important thing is self-motivated. On the other thing, of the grass being, needing to be mowed at this very moment, I mowed Saturday, some of it was higher than the cab with the big tractor, that's how, how it's grown, and that, most everything is almost waist-high out there. And the question I have, I mentioned it to Michael earlier, I have two or three volunteers, they're not part of the county, per se, but I, I need permission to let them use our equipment, the mowers, the tractors, what have you.
That I got to talk to Erin so she can check my insurance before I told them that. I would get with her and get back to them about that because...
My, my question for you, Mr. Ted, sorry, Madam Chairman?
Yes, proceed.
I'd get used to that. Or is it chairwoman?
Whatever, chairman, I don't care.
But anyway, I don't want to make anybody mad. With, with, I mean, I understand the grass, vegetation could be an eyesore, but is there anything that's hampered navigation?
Uh, yes, this has to be mowed, what I mowed Saturday. It has to be mowed down. It's, it's detrimental to the approach to the runway.
Can you give me an example, just a broad example?
Out near your house on the north end up there, it's where I was actually mowing then. And I had Tom out mowing around the, the lights and he has been working quite a bit, but I just need clarification on using volunteers with the county equipment.
If, if, for some reason, we check and, and we can't because it's too much of a liability to let a layperson use our equipment, maybe we can get, if it's a, if it's an issue that needs to be addressed now, maybe we can get Mr. Howard and some of the road department crew to go and just knock it down.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I don't want that to, they already have enough job, enough work to do as it is, but if it's becoming an issue where we, they, they can't use our airport, then that's another issue. So maybe if, if that can't happen, and I appreciate those volunteers stepping up, then we may need to look at Mr. Neighbors and his crew maybe going out there knocking it down.
Plus, you know, Friday...
Until we can get this employee.
Yeah, Friday, Wednesday, we'll be working overtime, so maybe...
I have spoken to them and they are...
Maxed out.
Busy, maxed out.
That's what I figured.
With that being said, I'm sorry, with that being said, we need to kind of triage that. I mean, let's, let's take care of what's a navigational hazard and then we'll worry about the cosmetic, you know, if, if we can break them free is what I'm saying.
It's more than cos, it, it's...
Well, I understand, I'm just saying, when we, if we can get the road department to break free, get us some help, just triage it in a way to where we're, we're dealing with the, the navigational, you know, hazards first.
Okay.
And then i- i- in that way, if we get, if they get caught away from it, then, then at least we've got that much of it taken care of.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else? Thank you, Mr. Ted. Anybody else got anything for Mr. Moron?
Please say no.
I, I do. So the, the, and I spoke to you about this last week. I know we had talked about benches, the benches in East Point.
Oh, yes.
We need to proceed about trying to see, they're not on the sidewalks. It's not like if we, if we pull them up, we're going to be making holes in the sidewalk. They're all on, on the grass.
Okay.
So we need to, and I went and looked and I, I can't tell if they're bolted down or concreted down. There's a lot of the grass that is around the bench, so I couldn't really like get down there to see, but we need to have that looked at and try to get those benches that we talked about, meetings back, removed and replaced in the carib, the caribou area where we had discussed.
Okay.
Those a few meetings back.
I think I'm going to talk to Howard about, plus Howard about that and then we'll get back.
It's going to take some kind of heavy equipment. It's not just going out there with a, a socket and unscrewing the bolts and lifting it. That's not going to happen. They're very heavy.
Okay.
So, anybody else?
I have something. This morning, we had the lady from Alligator Point come up here and talk about the beach access to Officer Chip Morrison. If you don't mind, get with her, Michael, and let's come back with something that the board can look at possibly about the parking and all that. They want all that removed.
Okay.
Now, whether that can be removed or not is for us to figure on. Also, the, the other thing is contact Howard over at the road department. And I know a, a few weeks ago, they didn't have enough signs to go down on the Ballpoint Road for golf cart ordinance and all that. Landarc needs the same thing, so ask Howard if he's got enough for Landarc and Alligator Point and Ballpoint, then we'll have it all taken care of. And if there's any signs that are not meeting what we're supposed to be, because there was one sign at Pine Street saying fifty-five miles an hour and it was a thirty, thirty miles an hour, I think somebody just done that as a, as a joke. They all time doing stuff like that down there, but...
I'm sad to hear that.
Um, yeah, because I know we, the clerk had ordered some signs at a parking lot too, because they were having trouble with, towards parking. And he, he said they waited till the end of the budget year and they ordered all their signs, so I'll ask.
Yeah, but make sure that they go ahead and do that.
Actually, Virginia's listening right now, so it's good enough for Virginia to do that.
I hope Virginia hears me.
Yeah.
But anyway, and then, nothing else, but I would like for, I know we're, we're running late and everything and I'm the one asking, "Give it the hour, okay?" But I want, I want Mr. Schuler to talk to us about what happened this morning with the Division of Forestry, because I'm kind of, I, I'm going to let it slide a little bit, but that's not what I was told on the phone by Clint Davis. So I would like for him just to say a few things because, and, and it's like I, I approached Mr. Davis when he called me and to talk to me about it, the first thing I asked him was, "Are there beetle bugs down there, pine beetle bugs?" He said, "No." And I said, "Well, don't you have other roads?" He said, "Yes, but we don't want to have to deal with D E P for the wetlands." So, I mean, it upsets me that he did not let me know in the interim that he had this guy up here that says treatment of beetle bugs or preventative measures of beetle bugs and never told me a thing, then come in here and say something different. But anyway, Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
All right. Anyone else for Mr. Moron? All right, Mr. Schuler?
Well, just to, there's nothing else on my report unless y'all have any questions for me, but to address the commissioner's comments, when this matter was, with forestry using McIntyre was brought to my attention, I had the clerk's office send me over the original ordinance and the emergency ordinance. I won't read the entire thing to you, but the, the dispositive portion of the ordinance, which allows for the special use permit, is for the purpose of removing and treating timber infected with the southern pine beetle. So in my discussions with Mr. Davis and Mr. Cook, my first question was, "Is there an infestation?" He said, "No." In an effort to be, because I know the board, as I said earlier, y'all want to be helpful to everybody. So my question was, "Well, can thinning be considered treatment?" Because if, you know, a professional forester tells me that thinning is treatment, then I think they come within the purview of the, the special use permit. Since this morning, I've gone back and looked at my emails and there's a response back, first from Mr. Cook dated August twenty-fourth at nine twenty-one a.m. I won't read the entire thing, but the current area is not infested with southern pine beetle. Thinning is not considered direct treatment, it's considered preventative measure. Then an email from Mr. Davis, August twenty-fourth at nine thirty-seven, thinning is precautionary measure. The ordinance doesn't say anything about special use permit being granted for a preventative measure, just if it's for treatment or removal. So I sent back a, a response to both of them, August twenty-fourth at nine fifty-one. "Gentlemen, what does Mr. Cook's phrase, 'While thinning is not a direct treatment for southern pine beetle infestation,' mean? The emergency ordinance authorizing the permit is limited to the treatment and removal of pine beetles. Sorry to put you on the spot, I'm not a forester and do not know if thinning is a treatment or not, that's why I'm asking you guys. Therefore, in the absence of an actual infestation, unless thinning is a practice with a treatment of the pine beetles," in the plain language of the ordinance, "does not allow for the permit to be issued. If thinning is considered a treatment, then the board could issue the special use permit." Again, that's dated August twenty-fourth. I mean, there would have been no need for them to come to the board if they had said to me then what they said this morning.
I know.
That thinning is treatment. So I'm sorry we put everybody on the spot. I mean, that was never my intent, but, you know, I accept what they gave, the information to the board this morning and we'll proceed with the issuance of the special use permit. As you could probably tell on my face this morning, I was a little surprised.
Well, that's not...
But I accept what they tell us and I, I don't challenge that.
That's not the thing. The thing, like I told Clint, you know, we're in here trying to, trying to help the people. We're in here trying to take care of what the people need to be, have taken care of. We can either work together and it'd be best for us to hold hands and work together, you know? But, but for some reason, why did they, why did they not tell you, why did they not tell me, being the chairman of that, I mean, being the commissioner of that district? And then we wouldn't have had to waste a lot of time. And it's just, it's just not right. So I don't know what's going to make them understand.
For myself, I'll chalk it up, everyone had a misunderstanding and move on.
Yeah, yeah, I know it. But I just, I, I just had to get it out because I can tell you that I'm going to have another discussion with Clint, because I want to tell him that he needs to be forthright with that.
Above my pay grade, Commissioner.
But could, can I ask a question as far as McIntyre? Is that an improved road or...
It's a dirt road.
It's a dirt road?
It's a very nice dirt road, but it's a dirt road.
But just out of cur, I mean, and it's in your district, so obviously it's, uh...
Yeah, people live in there.
Something that's near and dear, okay. Is it just the, the potential road damage from the logging trucks or, it just seems like you don't really want them on there?
There's an ordinance. The ordinance was in the eighties?
Yeah, there was a, I'm just trying to get clarity.
That states they're not, they're, they don't allow heavy-use trucks or double axle trucks or these big, big trucks to, to damage the road, because the, the big trucks, since it is a dirt road, can potentially put a liability or, detriment on the county to have to go great and all. And in that ordinance, when we let them do it the last time, it was an agreement that they would fix and repair the road of the damage that was caused by these trucks. So that, that's where that ordinance comes into play, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Schuler.
And I was mistaken when I said the eighties earlier. I've got a, that's why we keep written records. The emergency ordinance regulating McIntyre was ordinance ninety-two dash three, so it was enacted in nineteen ninety-two.
Is Mr. Bevan coming on?
And it essentially restricted McIntyre, or that portion of McIntyre Road, basically to cars. I mean, it didn't allow people with big RVs and fifth wheels and all that on there. Didn't allow for log trucks.
I guess one more question would be, just simplified, is, did, did the state not uphold their, their part of the...
Now, that's a Howard question. I have no idea. The special use permit, I, I do have a copy of it here from twenty-twenty-two and there is a road maintenance standard that they are required to, either forestry or their contractor, ultimately forestry if the contractor doesn't take care of it, has to maintain the road and to return it to the condition it was in immediately before they put their log trucks on it. We don't want to, to improve it, just put it back to exactly like it was before you put the log trucks on it. And that's something that would be monitored by Howard.
If they are thinning and they're needing log trucks, obviously it's timber that's lucrative. I mean, they're going to sell the timber. Don't we get a certain percentage of that?
I think it's ten percent.
It's good.
The school does?
We don't.
Yeah, it, it goes to the school now.
Okay.
It hasn't come to us for, well, geez, I don't even know.
But I think the confusion is, the last time we did it, it was an infestation of these pine beetles.
Right.
Now, they say that there isn't any pine beetles, so there's some miscommunication, if you will, of preventative versus, there's not, since there's none there, they're saying it's preventative to thin it out so that there isn't an infestation.
When Clint called me and, and I told him, I said, "I will go with whatever the attorney advised is," and that's the way I am, that, that's why we pay him the money. And I said, and he said, "Well," I said, "The first question I asked him, 'Does this timber have pine beetles?' Because if it has pine beetles, you can walk up underneath that emergency ordinance because it was within a year that was done last year." And he says, "No, it doesn't have pine beetles." And I said, "Well, why don't y'all want to use your roads?" Now, they, you've got to realize, they own all that property and all those roads out there, except for the McIntyre.
Right.
And he said that he didn't want to have any, uh, dealings with D E P because it's, it's wetlands. Well, what do they think on McIntyre, every one of those culverts that they go over, what do they think that is? That's a wetland that has been mitigated by Franklin County. You see what I'm saying? So that's the thing. My thing is, don't tell me on the phone one thing and get to a public meeting and say another thing. That's what makes me mad. It doesn't make me mad, it just gets me to where I don't trust people. That's what I was...
Uh-huh. That's what I was, there's a...
Attorney Schuler, I see on, did you, you had this action item on your report, is that something we need to address today about Duke Energy land swap?
Oh, my goodness, you are correct. Thank you. It's been a long day.
That's your job.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
There we go.
This will be very brief, though. At the last board meeting, I had presented to the board Duke Energy's request to purchase a small, single city lot planted in the city of Apalachicola, down the Bowery area, butts up next to the existing tower. The lot size, according to the city maps, is thirty by eighty. The board did not authorize anything other than for me to have a conversation with Duke Energy's representative about the potential purchase. During that conversation, a potential land swap was brought up. And so I just wanted to bring that potential land swap back to the board's attention, make sure I have your permission to discuss terms for your future consideration of a possible land swap of our thirty by eighty parcel for a parcel of land that's owned by Duke Energy just outside of the city limits of the city of Apalachicola. Their parcel of land has a transmission tower on it, so I wanted to make sure that, as a part of any discussion even moving forward, where are the transmission lines? I'm told they are on the southernmost portion of that property owned by Duke. And if you'll look at my report that references the Duke Energy parcel, you'll see there's a Fred Meyer Road, you can see that road on the map, and there's a tiny little triangular piece of the most southerly part of that Duke Energy parcel, and that's where the transmission lines are located, according to Danny Collins. So that would leave the, the vast majority of this almost five-acre parcel unencumbered with transmission lines, because obviously, whatever plans the board may or may not have for this property, if you approve a land swap, you don't want to have to be dealing with property that's got power lines, you know, transiting it in such a fashion that you[1702.23]